Good evening, welcome to the committee of the whole meeting. For the municipality of Argyle, we'll call the meeting to order. We have an agenda, does anybody have anything to add or to lead from the agenda? Seeing none, anybody have a conflict of interest to declare? And if you don't, if you, if we come across an item that you have, you can always declare it at the time. And we have a presentation, the first, the first order business is a presentation. It's Rob Stevenson, he's the Business Now Lead for REN. And Rob, if you're, if you're on and you're ready to go?
Yeah, we need to, do we need to approve the agenda first?
Oh, we didn't approve the agenda, sorry. Yeah, we need to do that, so we need an agenda. Move to approve, second, all in favor signify by raising your hand. Country-minded, carry, sorry about that, now Rob, you're on.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name's Rob Stevenson and I'm with the Western Regional Enterprise Network. And let me just see here. Are you guys seeing that? My presentation? Yes, you're good, okay. So, the, for any of you who are new and may not know, the Western Regional Enterprise Network is the business development body of the municipalities. It's called the REN, the Western REN, and it's region-wide. It works for the municipalities of Barrington, Argyle, Yarmouth, Clare, and Digby, and the towns of Yarmouth and Digby. So there's seven municipal units that it supports and works with. Our projects include such things as green energy, rural internet succession, the connector program, Win This Space, the Atlantic Immigration Pilot Program, and a new one which is called the Local Immigration Partnership, which is going to be very interesting. I would like to thank council for allowing me to make this presentation tonight. And my name is Rob Stevenson and I am the Business Now Lead for the, for the Western REN. So let me just see here. Business Now is dedicated to supporting the, our businesses in our region. It is all about helping the businesses, keeping and creating jobs, and it's about economic development, played a very large role reaching out to businesses during last March, April, May during what the COVID onset and helping companies navigate through a lot of the COVID support programs that were complicated, new, and hard to navigate for the business owners. I'm here to talk tonight about two of the business programs that the Western REN is is helping businesses with. One of these programs in under Business Now is called the Continuous Improvement Program. Continuous Improvement or Lean Manufacturing is an analytical process that works to minimize waste within a company's processes, systems, and operations in order to make a company efficient and competitive. It's a project that is facilitated by a consultant, where the consultant goes in, works with the management team of the company, and analyzes the company's internal processes and recommends changes and helps the company to work on making those changes. It's also a mindset that is trained into the management team and that continues and grows in the company long after the consultant finishes. The goal of continuous improvement is to make our companies stronger and more sustainable and more efficient and more competitive overall. It's to help our companies or our regions employers become stronger, more competitive, more sustainable, able to hire more people, able to grow their region's economy, and to make them able to reinvest their profits back into their businesses. Ultimately, we want to provide jobs for people, for more people, and keep them employed here well into the future, and we seek to do that by making the companies more competitive. So, the Continuous Improvement Activities of 2020 have been quite positive. We are offering subsidized one-week projects to companies which serve as an introduction to continuous improvement and to operational consulting in general. Many businesses, business operators do not have direct exposure to what consulting is, nor what it can do for their businesses. From this fiscal, we have, actually we have nineteen projects finished between February and the end of March in 2021 over about sixteen different companies. There have been many positive outcomes from the projects, and the vast majority of the companies that have been working in the projects are seeking to book next-step projects. And they've really seen the benefit from what continuous improvement can do. Continuous Improvement Consultant works with the company's management team to perform analyses on the company's processes and look for opportunities to streamline the company's processes dramatically. The types of waste that can be reduced by a consultant project in a company include things like transporting, moving materials from one place to another, inventory, capital that's tied up in inventory can be reduced, motion, unnecessary movement of people, product and things, overproduction, keeping too much stock, which ties up a lot of money, over-processing, which is making a product that's beyond the required needs of the customer, defects, causing waste and rework, and waiting time, ideally reducing bottlenecks and wasted time. The benefits of implementing continuous improvement and lean manufacturing in a business are increased product quality by reducing defects, improve lead times, improve customer experience and sustainability, making a company better able to react and adapt better to the ever-changing needs of the business community. Employee satisfaction improves. Removing unnecessary work from workers' routine while involving them in the process boosts morale and employee satisfaction. And generally, the company, the consultants rather, work very directly with the frontline workers and supervisors. It's overall designed to help reduce costs and improve inventory processes, reducing the capital tied up, and also to increase profits, and all of the above have an impact on the company's bottom line. Some of the results from the Western REN's Continuous Improvement Projects include a reduction by, in transportation waste by twenty-three percent, and the company is planning to use the savings towards growing the company. One company, they reduced the cleaning cost by forty-eight person hours per day, and they're redirecting this labor savings into two premium product lines. Another company increased profits by twenty-six percent by using efficiencies to increase the capacity and add value to the product lines. Another company increased productivity by nine percent or roughly six hundred thousand dollars in sales. And another company doubled the production output in one production line within a single week of consultant work. So, and we have a number of testimonials, which I won't go into too deeply. In AFTario, for example, there was a tremendous impact on the stockroom and the internal logistics of parts and equipment, which is basically the nerve center of any shipyard. And Leonel LeBlanc had great things to say about this at Riverside Lobster, about lean, as did Phil LeBlanc at IMO Foods. And so we have a number of folks in Argyle that recently completed projects. One was Inshore Fisheries, another was Evans Fresh Seafood, another was Dion's Bakery, and who else we got out there, we've got a few others, but as I say, this was across the entire region from Barrington through to through to Digby, so you can check with them. The other program I just want to talk with you briefly about is called our Virtual Advisor Program. It's geared towards smaller businesses. It's a new program run in partnership with the Boomers Plus Organization. Boomers Plus has a large pool of very experienced business people who are usually semi-retired or retired. They help small businesses by giving advice and coaching over the phone. So this is targeted mostly at small, smaller businesses, entrepreneurs and startups, for the most part. The program consists of four to six calls between the advisor and the business owner over a span of two to three months. The service is free, and the advisor is selected on the basis of the main issue that the business owner had identified as being their priority, usually to solve a problem or to help navigate through a difficult situation. The advisor would be chosen with the background that most closely matches the need. And there are many advisors available. They're doing this over the phone or virtually, so they can be advisors from all across Canada. There are specialists with all different types of experience, like accounting and finance, production, sales, marketing, IT, exports, food processing, quality control, entrepreneurship and business startups, restaurants, business planning, retail, human resources, and pretty well everything else that you could think of. So, we've had about fifteen or sixteen entrepreneurs enroll in this project in the last fiscal year. And I just wanted to bring this to your attention, these two programs, and ask if, if you're able to, and you know some, some business people out there, if you can reach out to them, and when you're talking with them and make them aware of these programs. These are subsidized, the Continuous Improvement Program is subsidized to approximately ninety percent of cost, and the Virtual Advisor Program is subsidized so that it is free. So, reach out to your folks and your constituencies and let them know that these projects exist so that we can, we can help them out with that. And I would like to thank you, council, for allowing me to make this presentation tonight, and I'll be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Don't see any hands. My, my question would be, how, how big a business does it have to be? Does it, you know, does it need so many employees into the business in order for it to qualify or?
No, we've done everything from a two-person business in continuous improvement, which is kind of on the small side. Usually we're looking for five or ten, all the way up to AFTereo with, you know, a couple or three hundred, right? Thing, so, but it's, it's generally good for, I would say, you know, eight or ten and up for continuous improvement. The Virtual Advisor Program though is, I think, really good for a small operation, a single person or just a couple of people. It really helps sometimes when owners can get a little bit of advice from someone that may have been in a big corporation in the city somewhere, and I've done that particular operation, you know, hundreds of times. It helps them not feel so lonely in their small business, so, you know, yeah.
Anybody else? I see councillor Sonia and councillor, councillor Sonia, go ahead.
Thank you, my only question is, do you do startup businesses as well?
We would with the Virtual Advisor Program, probably not so much in the, in the Continuous Improvement Program, however, but you can get some very good guidance in startups and, you know, sole proprietorship type businesses. And that's, that's kind of a crucial time, I think, for, for a lot of people when they're starting up the business. Yeah.
Councillor Schrempf.
Very good presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevenson, the, you said that people do go on the Continuous Improvement Program, people go at the site, visit the site, and, and they have meetings with the owners and stuff?
Yep, yeah, they, usually, what we're, what we're offering is a sort of an introductory program where it's one full week of consultant time, maybe during one week or broken down into two different, you know, three days to start and then two days to finish up, a couple or three weeks later, that type of thing. What is, is very crucial for this type of consulting project is that the management team and the, the principal, the main manager, has the time to dedicate to the consultant while he's there. And that's kind of a hard thing in some busy operations, as you can imagine, to, they're not going to spend all, you know, five, five days together, but it's going to be for the general managers probably at least half a day every day that the consultant is there with the consultant and his management team as well, because they're really working on analyzing what the company's processes look like, and also coming up with a plan on where do we go from here? Coming, you know, developing an action plan by the management team so that they can say, this is where we're going to go, and then they actually divide up the tasks and parts of that plan among the different people in the, in the management team. And it's very valuable that way, you know.
Three hundred percent.
Yeah, usually the, the, the cost of it is, you know, seven or eight hundred dollars for a company. But usually that's not the, the sticking point, usually it's the time, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Yeah, councillor Woodrow.
Just wondering, Mr. Stevenson, what's going to happen with this COVID here? I imagine you're gonna have to shut down for a bit, or what?
That's, that's a setback, we had to shut down, you know, we kind of started up in June, just on a, on a small scale, because we'd been shutting down since, well, the first project was in February and the next one was in June. We shut down those three, four months because of COVID, and now it's not going to happen in the next two weeks anyway, and probably, probably a full month, we're, we are very careful about it. We have a couple of consultants that come for the Continuous Improvement and they're, one is in Bedford, so that's HRM, but the other one is outside of, of Halifax, so it's not quite as bad. We have, you know, according to what it was, what the rules were earlier, so.
Okay, great, thanks, quick, you know.
Yeah, yeah, so yeah, it would probably be a month or so before we can get rolling again.
Anybody else? Seeing no one else, again, thank you very much for the presentation. It's, it's, it sounds like a very good program, according to some of the comments of the ones who took part in it. So again, on behalf of council, thank you, and it was a great, great, great presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, council, thank you everyone.
Okay, the next item is adoption of minutes, we have the annual council meeting of April thirteenth, and we need a motion to approve. Moved by councillor Digtin, seconded by councillor Albright. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Country-minded, carry. Business Rising for the minutes, it's the Eelbrook Fire Department, they had, they got a letter from from the Minister, Minister of Municipal Affairs, I guess, it was, it's basically here for information. They've applied for, they've applied for grants and see where they could get some money, but obviously didn't work, and this is just a letter that, that states, I, I, I guess there was something that said from, I came from, from, according to the letter, that fire department didn't think that they had been considered or that, that very helpful advice that they were given, but they're supposed to be getting a call or contact from another person. And it is hardy stuck with the Director of Finings to explain why and how the system works. So, again, this is basically there for information, we can't do anything about that at this point, so. Yes, CEO Muse, oh, I see councillor Albright first.
Okay, I just wanted to say, we did meet, so that council knows, we had a meeting with the Eelbrook Fire Department and the engineer and the architect. Basically, they've exhausted every, every potential funding opportunity, and there's just nothing out there extra for them. And what they have in terms of a design exceeds what they have in terms of money. So they're at the point now where they're going back to, to the architect and to the, the engineer, and they have to rejig their, their, their design, they have to be able to build something that they can afford, so that's kind of, that's where they're at right now, is what are they going to build with the money that they are able to, to come up with? It's been frustrating, very frustrating.
Yeah, for sure, I mean, it's been going a long time, and, and the longer they wait and the more expensive it gets, so, you know. If they can do what they have now, I guess they have to do what they can at this point.
They need to be able to pick, to cover their truck, right, they're getting a new truck.
That's the main thing right now.
That's the main thing at this point, yep.
CEO Muse.
Just quickly, so, since that meeting, there's been some announcements of additional funds coming out of the federal budget. So we're actively looking at those, the one that might be interesting is the, and I'm just pulling it up here now, it's the Green and Inclusive Community Buildings. So this is funding, as it might suggest, inclusive and green, but is for buildings, and fire departments would qualify for this. So there's different streams, I will, I'm not, certainly not an expert at this, but, because it just came out, but I would say that there are applications that are for sub-three million, sub-ten million, and sub, between ten and twenty-five, and then over twenty-five or up to twenty-five million. So in each category, the requirement to make an application is different. So they would be under the under-three category, which is the, the, I won't say easiest, but I'll say the, the less onerous application of all, and it's a first-come, first-served application. So, we are actively looking at all of our projects here at the municipality, not have, I don't have a conclusion for you, but we got to move quickly on this one, because if there's an application to be made, if it's first-come, first-served, sub-three, then two things need to have, three things need to happen, you need to engage Eelbrook as quickly as possible, and second, engage their, their professionals as quickly as possible and say, what do we need to do with this new building? They're looking for shovel-ready projects, they're looking for projects to go, 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 and I think this one could potentially fit that funding. And the funding is, is, is a, is a high number, like it's a, it's a high percentage of the project. So, so there is hope on the horizon, and, and I recognize that this is the first time that you've heard it, because I've really only received this information recently, and I am committed to coming back to you with a broader strategy on that. And, and, you know, we have a bunch of projects, so we have to assess all of them, and Eelbrook certainly seems to be a solid fit for the smaller project. This funding could actually be something that we could go after for a, a, a project that could be twenty-five million. I can't imagine a project that we might have that could be in that range, oh wait, maybe regionally. So that could be an area of, of interest to our region and to us.
Does Eelbrook know about this? Do they know?
They, I have not spoken to Eelbrook about it, they may know about the funding independently, but they certainly didn't learn it from me as of yet. So, you know, again, we will be working pretty quickly on this.
Well, that's, that's good to know, you know, that there's a potential, at least, that, that something could be available to them. Did you say, like, like those are smaller projects, like in, in, in that category?
Yes, so I mean, the Eelbrook project isn't a small project by means, but in the, in the definition of, of the federal funding window, a three-million-dollar project is considered a smaller project from a construction perspective.
That would be great, if they could get a hold of that for sure and qualify.
I, I believe that the federal government on that level could fund up to eighty percent of a project.
Oh, wow.
That, I mean, if this project was to be, was to qualify or was to be successful, it would be a game changer.
For sure.
Yeah, so it is certainly because we've identified as council, council has identified this project as a priority project in past discussions, we are, we are actively engaged in, in this one.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Councillor Schrempf.
This goes to the CEO. Have you looked at the, at the funding form or application enough to know if it takes provincial and municipal funds also with, with the feds?
That, that's an excellent question. This fund is designed, especially for the three-million ones, to not have to engage the provincial government. So, it is designed specifically to put something on the ground with speed, right, because anytime you, you know, the more organizations you involve, the slower it becomes, right? So, the federal government did not want, on the smaller projects, to have to rely on the provincial policy. Now, on the larger projects, that, that would be probably more necessary, because obviously, well, two things. Number one is their percentage drops as the, as the project rises in cost, so their percentage drops. On the twenty-five million, it might only be, you know, forty, fifty, sixty percent, like I can't remember the number, but it's not eighty, right? So, so at that point, you, depending on the size of the project, you may want to engage your provincial partners to see if they, if they want in. So, on a project of this nature, this is, this is really good news, because we already have a local component secured, or at least, you know, I mean, a plan to secure it, I should say.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, well, again, that's, that's good, at least it's a potential, so. Okay, we'll we'll continue. And financial statements are next, and I'm going to turn that over to the CEO, to the ovary. And financial statements are next, and I'm going to turn that over to the uh, C A O to the voluntary.
Thank you, um. These are the March thirty-first financials, um, so there's really, there's two things I'd like to, to point out, I mean, you've seen these numbers a multi. Through, throughout the year, so I'm not gonna go uh, in, in. A ton of detail, I'm gonna try to keep it high level. Some of this is, is not news to you, um, but we now have the actual uh, numbers in March. So um, I'll say on page one, what you'll notice more, more than anything is the D transfer tax revenue. Um, up a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars from, from the budget and you'll recall. That we estimated that D transfer taxes would be decimated by COVID and the opposite happened. Um, and, and, and continues to show strong uh, coming into uh, the new year. So even in April, we, we are seeing some transactions of, of note. So that's not necessarily at an end, um, it's, it's good news for us, obviously. Um, and so um, the rest of the, the remaining revenues are, are fairly close to expected, except for return on investments. Again, we assumed a cash flow challenge and we made assumptions before we knew about the COVID loan that we uh, received. So again, we did the budget in, in an air of uncertainty and, and. Uh, thankfully, um, the result was better than we, than we expected. So overall, uh, the total revenues uh, for the year eight point six five million compared to what we expected at eight point four seven. Uh, that's, that's, that increases a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over expected. And I will also say that the variance is um. Takes into account that we, th- this increase in revenue um, is actually a lot more than what that number indicates. Because if you recall, council uh, was recommended an amount to come from reserve. In order to make this budget balance, because we were, you know, w- we were noting a lot of drops in revenue. While the drops of revenue, not only did the drops of revenue did, did not happen, they actually were higher than they ever were. So um, so from a revenue perspective, um, we did much better than expected. So uh, from a, and so moving on to page two, if you're following on the pages, um, so for the expenditures. We, we managed to do better than expected as well, um, there uh. In particular, we um, um, had savings in fire protection, um, those are not the savings that you want, because those are. Uh, you know, we were unable to train our people because of COVID, so that's not an expense that. While it's, it's great to save money, that's not, that's not exactly our intent, our intent is to train our volunteers. Uh, so that, so that's um, you know, while we, we did save money, it's not exactly ideal. Uh, we did save, uh, we had savings uh, in the sewage collection disposal, uh, and in East Public Water Utilities. We just did better than expected and some of the projects uh, that we had anticipated were delayed slightly, so that, that's. Another reason why you would see a variance there, garbage collection and disposals are big savings. Um, because when we did the budget, we expected to do things like uh, ditch cleanup, litter cleanup. That was budgeted at twenty-two, our actual was zero, so, and uh, we also expected increases in residential waste. Uh, that did not occur, so a combination of factors in almost every line had a savings. So that is an unusual amount to save under garbage collection disposal, um, again, the unpredictability of COVID and the fact that we didn't. Provide all the services without we would. Um, moving on to recreation and cultural, I'm, environmental development is mostly as budgeted. Under recreation and cultural, we, we did have savings in, uh, in, in the uh. Recreation Act of Living as well as our courthouse and museum, again, repairs didn't occur the way that we expected in. Courthouse as well with recreation, we had a gap where we had no director of recreation, uh, due to transition. I mean, that was part of the reason, other reasons include uh, just not being able to deliver all of the services that we, we thought we would. Because of COVID. So overall, um, just on page three here, there's, there's two things here that I'd like to note. Uh, the surplus right now is showing a hundred and thirty-eight thousand two oh one. Um, it, the surplus was higher than that and I'll explain uh, what I'm proposing and I'm just, I'm just gonna. Go right down to the, to the page that it refers to, and it's the very last page. On the very last page, um, of our detailed financial report, which you'll find. Is that there's a transfer to the capital reserve and on that transfer, we would have anticipated a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Which we typically transfer every year, uh, because of the uh, unique nature of this fiscal year. And because uh, because of the uh, the known capital projects that are coming. Um, to, to our community, whether they're regional or whether they're local. Um, it is our recommendation that we increase that amount this year because our surplus uh, does allow that to happen. So what we're proposing um, is, is a fairly significant transfer to the capital reserve in addition to the one thirty-five. So if you see the variance on that page, it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So this amount is due almost entirely by the uh, D transfer tax uh, increase. And what we're proposing is that we would take that, that what we consider to be a one-time um. Uh, e- extreme situation and apply it towards our capital projects so that future tax. Future taxpayers uh, won't, won't, you know, will, will have less pressure. Uh, to have to pay it out of their, out of their rate in the future. So I will, I will end there and, and, and actually with a request for a motion uh, from council. To authorize an additional amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand into capital reserve. What I want to be clear is that the surplus that we discussed on page three. Already expects that number to be transferred, so. So the operating fund surplus would have been a hundred and seventy-five thousand higher, had we not. Uh, propose this recommendation.
Before we go to the motion, uh, are there any questions, comments on the uh, on the statements? Okay, we have Counselor Shret and Counselor, Counselor Donaldson, I'm gonna go with Counselor Donaldson.
Yes, Ellen, I'm trying to quite understand this. It's a, oh, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand operating surplus. And you wanna take that plus another. Hundred and seventy-five thousand, put it in capital reserves, like where's, where's the hundred, the other hundred and seventy-five coming from?
So, so um. Done is the hundred and seventy-five is already in that number, so had we not recorded the ones. So the, the one seventy-five is, is recorded as if it's an expense, okay? So then it, so uh, you know, got a little ahead of ourselves, right? So we actually recorded, not recorded it officially. But showing it in your financial statement, so in fact, had we not done that, your surplus would be one thirty-eight plus one seventy-five. So today, without your motion, that's what your mo- that's what your surplus is, so three hundred thousand.
I understand now, um.
Okay.
I'm good.
Counselor Shret.
Thank you, Alad, that was my first question, why the one seventy-five, so that's, you've got that teared up and returned you. A good question because I, I certainly wasn't sure where that had come from either. I got four, four small questions that, I'm not gonna bore anybody, but uh, question one, Alad, if you can answer them, as long as you get back to me later on. In I T uh, expenditures. Uh, depart, the, the Department of I T, transition. But you did a thousand, the actual was fifty-seven, sixty, increase of forty-seven. Uh, sixty-six, what, what, what happened there? I tried to figure out COVID, or is it?
Uh, no, that's an excellent question, so there is an associated revenue with that. Um, so I think I would have explained, this was over a year, this was before COVID actually hit hard. We had received funding confirmation of sixteen thousand dollars from the province of Nova Scotia. And the objective was to translate policies, that work has been completed. So, but, so there'll be, there, there's actually, um, there's, there's more than enough revenue to offset that difference. And we're, we're planning on doing another application for translation of website, uh, the province has been very generous in that area.
Very good, Mr. Chair, if I may, yes, a few more, few more questions, um. I let the grants, work organization, Mariner Center operating, uh, it's, it were showing twenty-four thousand, a hundred and thirty-seven dollars more. Uh, than budgeted, that uh, it says Mariner Center operations. That would be their deficit, my right, but it is in, is it in operation that's caused the deficit? If you kind of know my question?
I, I do, it's, it, again, very good question, so, so the first thing is um. That Mariner, since the way the Mariner Center bills us is they set the, they set the budget, which you, you approve. And then what happens is about five or six months in the year, they do, they finish their audit. And based on that audit, um, there's a, there, there's, there are times where there's an additional deficit that's create, that is. Um, determined, that wasn't billed. So what happened this year was we got billed for a portion of the, the year prior's deficit. Along with the budgeted amount this year, so that bill probably only would have been paid. Uh, you know, maybe two months ago, for instance. So um, so I, what I expect this year, I guess the good news is. Is that we probably overpaid them for this year's, and so I suspect that next year's budget number could be impacted positively. By uh, by an overpayment on our end this year, so. You know, they, they set the budget twelve years before, twelve months before, and then, and then life happens, right? So, so that's what happened there, um, and, and because we're, we're in for a third, uh, as part of the agreement then. But it does not include capital, I will be very clear about, I'm including capital.
Okay, Mr. Chair, number three, uh, under the emergency measures, I see emergency events contingency. Seventeen thousand two sixty-six, and we had budgeted zero, can you just tell us what that, where that came, what, what that is, just?
For sure, um, about ninety-eight percent of that is your cost of water delivery. And water distribution, so uh, we didn't budget that and we didn't budget it again this year either. And so I guess my philosophy on that is, is if it happens, then we'll pull it out of our operating reserve in order to pay for it. Uh, or, or through existing surplus, um, so that's, it's not that we're not anticipating the possibility. That there could, that it could happen again, uh, but uh, that's why it wasn't budgeted, that's the first part, the second part is. Is that would be our portion of the cost of, of water distribution at Mariner Center. Uh, the actual potable water that we, we, or drinkable water that we purchased and any other service that we would have provided. So we would have done that in conjunction with the municipality of Yarmouth and the municipality of Yarmouth was billed for their portion, so this is our amount.
Perfect, and the last question, housing R D A. I see, it says deficit, regional housing authority, six thousand over budget. Uh, I guess I didn't realize that we, uh, we provided deficit funding for them, but. Must be in an agreement or something we have with them?
It is, so a- again, uh, the problem with the housing is that we always get the information. Way later than it happens, so we make our best guess on budget based on prior. And then they tell us, you know, at some point during the year that it could be more, so I actually don't even have this year's invoice yet. What I have is an estimate of what it might be, and so how it works is they get their year end and the auditors come in and they do their stuff. And we're responsible for ten percent of the deficit. Uh, it's, it's not just ten percent of the entire deficit, because all municipalities in the tri-county housing authority are responsible. So our portion of ten percent of the deficit and that deficit is, is, is impacted by both operations and capital. So we're having a bit of a hard time with this one uh, pro- uh, provincially. And um, th- through AMA, we, we were asking questions about like. Can you get us a five-year history of what we're, what we've spent, because it's growing astronomically. And for us, uh, you know, six thousand over budget, it's like crap, that's, that's unfortunate, but for towns. That have a lot of these housing stock in their towns, that number could be ten times that. So it's, it's really important for us to be able to at least, you know, establish some predictability there, so. Unfortunately, there, we don't have a battle uh, to, 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 to um, to defend ourselves to, uh, against this bill. Um, only that we would like to get uh. Better information as what the future is holding and, and how we can, how we can try to. Reduce our portion of that cost in the best way possible.
Right on, thank you, Mr. Chair, Alad, great job, man.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Seeing nobody else, what we need first is a motion to accept the financial statements as presented. Moved by Council Albright, seconded by Council Four. All in favor, sign five, or raising your hand. Contrary minded, Carrie, now we may as well. Make the motion to uh, transfer the one seventy-five from a hundred and seventy-five thousand. From uh, op- operating to capital, so. Motion moved by Counselor Shret, seconded by Counselor. Donaldson. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Contrary minded, Carrie, thank you very much on for that. The next one is grant allocations and approvals, as you know, we all had the opportunity to uh. To go over the grants, we, we, we marked what we, we. Thought should be given and to take the average, and what we're gonna see here is the results. Of the average that was done by staff. So. I'm not gonna go over them, have you all had a chance to look at them, number one? And if you have, are there any, any questions, anything that you, you feel? You might think should be changed, or if you agree with what we uh. What was decided here? The, the one thing, we, we were told to stay below fifty-two, five and with the averages were below the, the, the amount. So, Counselor Shret.
What I see there is, is, i- is great, uh, we all pitch in, we put our numbers in and. You know, will I change anything? Nope, if that's a decision of our counselors, councilwoman, uh, guess what? To me, it's, it's, it's A-one, and I spoke to Kim a little bit and I don't think Kim will mind if I say that. On the form we got, I wish it, it could add up, like it used to add up, if you put a number in. And Kim said she's gonna be working on that stuff for next year, so Kim, great job and uh, yeah, any improvements? That you can do is, on that part will be good, thank you.
Okay, anybody else, Counselor Albright?
I just want to mention for people watching, um, Yarmouth County Ground Search and Rescue, people will notice that there isn't any number. Given there, um, they did put in a grant application, but I don't, I just want, I guess, them to know as well that it's because we are considering. Changing the way that we fund them, so we kind of had a conversation around there, so it doesn't mean we're not gonna give any funding this year, it's just, it's, it's. It's probably going to be different than grants to organizations, am I right?
I would say, yes, that's what we had discussed, I, I saw it on there as well and wondered like, do I, do I put something or don't I? And I wasn't sure if it had been changed or not, anyway, Counselor Donaldson. Your mic? Your mic? You're, you're muted?
Okay, let's start over, I have the eight-page attachment open here, but I don't see anywhere where it gives the final figures.
The final figures are, it, they, the way it is, it's every page says. What was for, for those that were, that were there, what was uh, the request and what we, what, what we're giving? And if you keep going down to the last page. Not the, yeah, the last page, page three, it says the total. There was ninety-five thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars requested and, and we're at forty-nine, three sixty-five. Do you see, do you see that, uh, Counselor Donaldson?
No, my, my attachments are messed up because I, I don't have the same attachment as you guys.
Oh, is that right? Oh, is that right? That's the attachment that was on the on the on the agenda.
I'm gonna show you just how stupid I am. I was looking down one lower and this is grants organization. So I just clicked on it. But that's the policy one. The next item will be discussing.
Yes, exactly.
Have your laugh now because I'm gonna stop the video.
That's fine.
Looking ahead. It's proactive.
I get it now. Thanks.
Anybody else? Yeah, C O Muse?
So on the issue of festivals and activities and whether we can have them or not, right? So may I make a suggestion? So I would suggest that. In the instances where they are activities, you can still approve an amount, right? So it's a festival and you're comfortable fifteen hundred, you can do that. But as a as a as a, I guess, an administrative function on your behalf. We will not be paying that out until the activity occurs or until we know the activity is going to occur. So you can make a conditional kind of, I mean, I, you know. I don't think you have to necessarily tell me exactly which ones, but I think that after you do your your approval. It might be wise to say on those activities that are impacted by COVID. That you would give us permission to hold back the amounts until we can confirm that the activity is gonna happen. So so that's just, you know, that's just protecting your dollar. Secondly, there's there is an activity that's on the list that you were not asked to to fund. Not because we want you to fund it. It's that it actually most likely falls into. The a different part of money. So as some the new counselors may not be aware of this nuance. But the rest of you are is that in your grants to orgs, you included a line item that said. That you can fund activities as long as they're they that they have applied through our system. And that they that it's like it's a one-time thing, like an activity-based event. And that it's either located in Argyle or benefits businesses in Argyle. So under those three definitions, the thick on. Activity for Monsieur the late Jerry Boudreaux. Now, the status of which at this point is they 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 can't have that event right now under COVID, but I'm sure they will eventually. So then the question becomes, you know, whether you would consider funding three thousand dollars towards that event. As a special event which will not impact your current budget that you're looking at right now. And the only thing I can say about it is is that it 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 does benefit our local businesses, or at least, you know, some of our local musicians. And and certainly Jerry Boudreaux was a former resident of the municipality. So I don't think it's a far stretch. To to say that it that it would it would fall under number three. And certainly they've applied and certainly it's a one-time event. So the other two are easy. Easy, easy to to meet. So with that said. You know, I'm confident to say that it would qualify in that area. The reason why I'm pointing it out as well is that they have a timing issue, or at least they did before today. Is that they thought they would have that event on the twelfth and thirteenth of May. Which means that they would require a decision far sooner than we normally would make a decision. So I just want to point those things out. And if there's any questions on any particular application. Kim is here and has seen them all and can give you any sort of details that you need. I don't think I did I miss anything, Kim?
No, that's good. Thanks.
Any questions? Yep, Counselor Donaldson.
I'm probably gonna make Ted mad at me, but I I believe we have a policy. Where we don't fund graveyards. Because we talked about this many, many times over the years. There's so many. Graveyards in the municipality that if we funded them all, it would it would completely chew up our grants organizations. And that was one of the reasons we started the community. Community grants that we can give out, the five hundred dollar grants, three thousand dollars per counselor. So did this slip through or we changed the policy somewhere along the line that I didn't know of it? You understand what I'm asking, Ellen?
I am. So I think so cemeteries are funded in two ways. So I think. What our grants to organizations says specifically is that it will not fund religious organizations. So churches, et cetera. So if the church has a cemetery fund, we cannot. Fund the cemetery fund. However, there are instances where cemeteries are no longer in. They're no longer run or managed by a religious organization. They're like community-driven.
Oh, that's great. I got three of them.
So I guess I guess that's, yeah, and and I guess that's where the nuances. We 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 didn't take it off because we couldn't. We couldn't land on whether it was a religious organization. Or not, because it it looked like a nonprofit organization. So that's that's the, you know, it's it's up to council how you want to approach it, but we as staff didn't. We didn't think we could take it off, but right, it's one of those that's really on the line there. We're not sure. Whether it would be considered a religious organization or not.
Like I said, I got three three. Graveyards that they're always asking me for funding and I just always told them, but they're neither one of them is associated with the church, so. They'll be able to put in for grant requests in coming years.
Right. Right, unless council now decides that it ought not to be, right? And then and I think that that that's entirely. In your ability to do that. So as a council. You know, we brought what we thought was the best information, but we could be wrong, right, as staff? So. So if you know, I think it's it's worth having the discussion.
Good young counsel Donaldson.
I'm done, yeah.
Okay, Counselor Sonya.
I'm not gonna argue whether whether it's, thank you, by the way, for having me. The the Plymouth Cemetery is is considered non-denominational. I don't know if that would. Add anything to its to its criteria. It's it's so it doesn't belong to any church or or religion. So that's and those are the questions that I did ask staff before this came on. So. I I just wanna add that to it. That's all.
Okay, anything else? Counselor Threat.
So if I'm getting this right. Speaking to the chair of the. Of the Soretzalin Cemetery. You're planning to try to maybe break away. You don't know what's gonna happen to the church. And farm your own company. That means the church, which is cemetery, which is owned by the Roman Catholic Episcopal Society. And they're in the process of maybe breaking away from that, you know, their own, therefore, we could. The Bureau scale or and answer it's odd and then. But therefore, if they're not associated, it could apply. Would I be right in saying that?
You you could be. You could be right. This is one of those situations where the grant says a certain thing. And I think what it comes down to is what do you want as a as a as a council? Like, do you want to be in the business of doing this? We it's been it's clear if the Roman Catholic Episcopal Corporation is the owner of that cemetery, it's 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 a negative for sure. You know, Counselor Sonia's point on the non-denominational and the fact it's not associated to religious organization. We've we followed follow the letter of the policy. And the letter of the policy says religious organization. It's not a religious organization. Therefore, we let it in, but but. But clearly, it has it has some implication in many cases to a religious organization. So I think the question the council should ask itself is whether you want to be in the business of doing this. And if so, do you want to limit the amount that you are in the business of doing this? That's the other thing you can you can absolutely do. And Counselor Donaldson is correct. One of the reasons why the district community grant was put in place so is so that religious religious organizations or cemeteries or others. That would typically not qualify would qualify under the five hundred dollars. And and the threshold was the way that we controlled how much we did, right? So in this instance, clearly, there's some, you know, ambiguity. So, you know, it it really is up to you what you want to do here. Right?
Counselor Sonya.
Thank you, if I may. The this particular grant is also the. The only one they will ask for outside of the five hundred dollar grant. It is especially for fencing. They already completed one side of fencing and they're doing financing the other part. And once this is done, it is done. So they will not be looking for that kind of financing in the future, if if that helps any.
Okay. I can, okay, go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out to Ted, I'm not intentionally picking on you, Ted. It's just I was not clear on the policy, like. It's it sounds like we're splitting hairs there on whether it's religious organization. But it's in both cases, like the three I have are not religious organization graveyards. There's one in Green Grove Road, there's one in Lower Argyle, and there's the one up in Argyle Head. Plus the old historical graveyard. So. I just automatically assumed based on the years that we just didn't fund graveyards. I didn't know there was a split the hair about the religious part of it. So that's that's why I was surprised to see it in there. I just thought it was overlooked. Or or Kim's new to doing the grants. She didn't realize it qualified or whatever, but Ellen pointed out that. Staff like she wasn't the only one that seen it. So they made a decision based on actual wording in the policy. So. I personally, I don't think we should be funding them outside of our community. Community grants that we have, we may be able to up it up to allow more than five hundred. Cause five hundred dollars nowadays compared to ten years ago when we started this doesn't go very far. But there's, yeah, we're gonna fund, let's make it fair for all of them and figure out a way to do it. So we don't have this discussion next year.
Counselor Albright.
Or the alternative to that is that we can fund them, but up to a certain limit. So they can still they can still apply for a district community grant to you for five hundred dollars. They could apply here, but we cut them. Maybe we maybe we cap it at five hundred here as well, so that they could get a total of a thousand dollars. That's another option.
Yeah. You know, anybody else before I speak? Yeah, Counselor Sonya, I know you said they won't be applying again, but if we if we do that. Then we're setting precedent. We're we're saying that it's okay. So so it would be hard to say no to another cemetery. Unless we have a policy, unless we straighten out the policy that either we do or we don't, right? Just to say this is only a one-time thing. It it I don't think that's the right way to go because. If if we have a cemetery in in a community that says, well. If we don't qualify, how come they qualify? You know, that's what you gotta be careful with, I guess.
I certainly respect that. And I mean, policy, you have to go by policy. The application, again, when when I brought it forward to staff, they thought that it was possible to do so. And. I I'm not gonna split hairs like Donaldson suggested.
Go ahead. Are you done? Counselor Diggin?
Thank you. I honestly feel as though this time, though, that Mr. Sonya. Done everything that he was supposed to do to put his application forth. The money was allocated towards the cemetery and that. And I feel as though it's gonna be up to us as counselors for the next time around. To make sure that we straighten out that policy and make sure it is a policy that is fair to everyone. And to all those those cemeteries that may be applying or maybe thinking of applying. So I I think I personally feel as though it would be heard, and I don't know if that's the way you were talking about. Or thinking about going, Mr. Warden, but to to haul it back there now. I feel as though everything was done above board and it'll be up to us as counselors. And that to straighten out the policy for the next time around. Thank you.
Okay, we've got counts. I'm gonna go to Counselor Threat and then Counselor Donaldson.
This question goes out to Kim. Kim, are they nonprofit?
The cemeteries? Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's what Donaldson.
And it was never my intention to have this this grant withdrawn this year. I just wanted to get clarification. And to move forward like I. I'm not trying to have this removed, if that's what Ted may be thinking, but not at all. So. It just we have a problem. We gotta fix it. Simple as that.
Exactly.
Cause I don't want free graveyards putting in grants for five thousand dollars each. I mean, it's not fair to the rest of the communities. I mean, I didn't have nobody put in for a grant for my district. So, I mean, it just goes like that sometimes.
C O Muse?
So certainly from our perspective, we could not, we didn't feel like we could deny the request. That doesn't mean. It just means like it wasn't clear to us that it that it was a straight-up denial. Our our process is is if it doesn't meet the criteria and we know, we don't even show it to you. Because why would you consider it? It doesn't follow your eligibility. If there's any, you know, ambiguity, we're gonna put it on. And we're gonna let you decide because these are your grants. They're not ours at all. So. So I guess I would say is if you have something in mind, like say, for instance, I'm not trying to influence your decision. I'm just giving a, for example, if you want to limit, then that whatever you want to do, if you want to limit it to a thousand. If you want to allow all of them to apply, if you want to allow none of them to apply, your best bet is to do that by motion today. So if you want to limit everybody to a thousand dollars, let's say, and I'm just throwing that number out there. Do that for this application is would be my recommendation, so that you're not actually making one decision on one hand. That's inconsistent with your intentions moving forward. So that would be, that's my only recommendation. It's 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 not a political one. It's it's just one that. It it allows a consist consistency, a consistent application of what your intentions are.
So what is the wish of council? On this?
Well, we should pass the we should pass the grants to organizations first.
Okay.
I would think.
Okay.
Unless somebody's got more questions and wants to make changes, but. Causing trouble, I guess.
Didn't cause any trouble. You you asked a question on on something that wasn't clear. Counselor Threat.
To counsel to Counselor Dawson's point, if we do pass the budget. Sorry, the grants, then does that set a precedence? I thought Alan was saying whatever we decide on our policy, it should apply to the cemetery. So we should, whatever we do with the Plymouth Cemetery should be consistent with the policy we're gonna do. Is that what you said, Alan?
Yeah, if you pass the motion as is, then you're you're agreeing to give the cemetery the amount that that you've recommended. So if if that's your intent, then then by all means, make and second the motion and move on. If your intention is to limit or to do something else, then you 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 can't actually pass this without making a modification.
Counselor Donaldson.
I don't understand, Ellen. If we pass this, if we pass this the way it is and the the amounts go through. And the Plymouth Cemetery gets their funding, what's stopping us from sitting down as a group and discussing this issue? Changing the policy for when the next round of grants come? Like, I I don't want to change what's there now, like.
Okay.
It's 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 fine. I'm fine with that. I just want clarity. So. All communities will know where they stand for the next round of grants. What I'm saying.
Sorry, you're right, uh, you can actually pass this motion and then change your, your grant policy after. I was referring to, if you wanted it, the decision to be consistent all the way through, then you'd have to make the change now, you don't
Oh, not at all.
Pass the motion and change it later.
Yeah.
You're right.
I'm gonna make a motion right now that we approve the, the grants that are
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussions? If there's no more discussion, all in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary-minded, carried. Okay, I have a question. And, and, and on, on the community halls, we don't make, we make a decision once you, once you, your, your staff goes over it, right? And may, staff makes a recommendation on where it goes, and then we make, because there's nothing shown here on of what the uh, uh, recommendations are for the, for the hall grants.
Right, so the recommendation hasn't been issued yet, so the first step would be to ask you as counsel whether you wanna put ten thousand or more to a maximum of twenty thousand in the budget. At that point, we can recommend to you, we can make a recommendation that suits your budget.
Oh, I see.
Right, so, right now we have four applications, last year we only had one, it was an easy decision. So, um, we have, council has the opportunity to, to go between ten and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, our intention was that we would fund two, two halls, up to two halls, uh, assuming that they wanted the full ten. But you can actually fund more if, if they don't use the full ten, if you know what I mean. So, I guess the first question I'd ask counsel is, um, you know, are you prepared to increase your budget this year to twenty from ten? Or, or another number from ten, or do you want me, you want us to, to go under the presumption that we're only gonna do one amount of ten thousand dollars this year?
Okay. Counselor Don'tamont.
Uh, question for CA Muse, so, so the difference between the budget of ten or twenty, what does it look like in the budget? Mister Number Man?
Uh, most like, so, so you, you might not be surprised that the budget deliberations is going to consider a tax increase this year. Because we've had multiple years of, of flat assessment increases and we've had massive increases in expenses. Um, so I'm not gonna get into the details of that, but I guess at the end of the day, it's most likely gonna come from your rainy day fund. If you're going to do an extra ten. Um, it may not come from that fund, right? Uh, but it's, I would budget that it would come from there. And ten thousand dollars out of a rainy day fund is, is not a significant amount. Uh, so if, if it's your intent to deal with some of these quicker rather than slower, then that would be your, your choice.
Great, thank you.
But we don't have, okay, go ahead, uh, Counselor Sret.
I would like to make a motion that we uh, increase the budget to twenty thousand dollars for the community halls.
Your secondor. I see lots of hands, I see, I saw, Counselor Don'tamont first. So, any discussion on that? Counselor Donaldson.
Just some clarification, because when we were filling out our figures for grants to organizations. The halls were mixed in there, like, I didn't know if we were supposed to put figures in there or what we're supposed to do, so.
No, you weren't supposed to put anything in there, and, and the fact that you didn't, you did exactly what we hoped. Wanted to do, we wanted to set the budget first because, because we have policy that, that says that's the first step.
Okay.
Question?
Question call. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Contrary-minded, carried.
So, Mr. Chair, before we move on, and I know there's just this one other issue, and it's the issue of the Fekon. The three thousand dollar requests.
Oh, for?
So that's not included in your calculation, so you've approved a bunch of money. You did not approve, there's, there's, you have not decided on that one yet because it, it wasn't included in the bunch, so. Uh, at this point, you know, I mean, if, if you'll permit me, I would recommend um, that you, that you participate only because our partners and Claire have matched, uh, the request. And, um, I think there is, um, some urgency associated with the request. Uh, and it, you know, obviously they'll be able to do the event when they do the event, they can't do it now, so. Um, but you can consider, uh, a conditional contribution at this time.
Anybody wanna make motion on that? Counselor Diggan, that's a motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, secondor. Counselor Don'tamont.
I guess I, I wanted to second it and ask a question. So, uh, the amount, uh, that Claire, uh, gave, I guess is how much, just to be clear?
Uh, three thousand, the same that your
Okay.
Motion is, yep.
Okay, if there's no other questions, all in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary-minded, carried. We are for decision. It's a policy, grants to organization, there's been a few changes made in there. Just added like they, they must have board members and have an annual general meeting and and a couple of other changes. One was in addition to the, uh, school programs, uh, s- school sports support. So, this here tonight is, the decision is for just to approve the first reading. We're not voting on the actual policy, we're just, uh, uh, looking at the first reading. So I'll open it up for questions, if anybody has any questions on these changes.
Um, Mr. Warden, in light of a discussion around potential additional changes. I, I could suggest that we would table this until such time as we can make changes to address the question around the cemetery and the funding.
Oh, okay.
So we can do it all at once.
Okay, so we don't need a, a, uh, first reading, uh?
Certainly, if there are any questions or clarifications, it can be done now, but
Right.
We'll probably do it again.
No vote, yeah. A motion on it, so are there any questions? Counselor Diggan.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I was just wondering what Mr. Muse said, uh, about being, it is a policy, we put something in. It'll have to go through another reading for us to actually change it again, I believe. So, and the only other thing, uh, these policies and, and these people that are asking for, uh, grants, uh, that do we have a right as a, um, uh, do we have a right as a council to ask for financial statements from these organizations? Or can we ask for, if there's ever some doubt?
Uh, through you, Mr. Warden, absolutely is the answer to your question, but specifically to larger requests is what the policy says. So, so I think, you know, any reasonable organization, if we requested a financial statement, I would expect that they would, they would give it to us. But the policy actually forces them to share financial information, if we've given them, uh, an, an amount, I think at exceeding five thousand. I don't, I could be wrong on that number, uh, but it is actually in the policy. If, if counselors had any particular concerns about, um, anything at all regarding requests and, and the nature of the request, um, you know, we certainly, um, can have that conversation offline to see if, if there's something that, you know, we should be considering, that we're missing a staff. Cause you as counselor in your communities and you know things that we don't.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Sret.
Uh, just most of the CAO, uh, we, we've got quite a bit of pressure on our grants to organization. As we saw tonight, ninety-five thousand dollars being asked for, and we've given up forty-nine thousand, fifty-two thousand. Whatever with the, uh, cultural, uh, the guidelines for, for school sports supporting funding, would that be just for the district community grants, uh, to you on news?
Uh, again, uh, that, this is, uh, I should, what I should say, that's an excellent question. So that, that is not new money, first of all. So, what that is, is, uh, is we had a situation where a school was asking counselor for money and and we, and, and then the question came to us and we were like, well, no, there's, there's no grant for that. But in fact, the recreation department has a specific grant for sports teams. They can access a four hundred dollar amount every two or three years, it's not every year. And, and so, um, and so that was not captured in our grants to organizations of the past. So it's not new money, it will not impact your decisions, uh, your regular decisions around grants to orgs. What, what it's basically doing is putting in policy what's actually happening at the recreation department. Uh, I don't have an issue with what they do, I think it's, it's a, it's, it's, it's an appropriate control where it's not every year all the time. So, um, I, I certainly don't have any issue with, with recommending it to you. But again, it's just, it's taking what was actually happening and putting it all in one spot, so that we can, we can know exactly what we're doing here.
Anybody else? So I guess we'll table this, and I guess we need a motion to table for a future meeting, move by Counsel Bork, seconded by Counsel Albright. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Contrary-minded, carried. Next one is destruction of documents, the records that, that, that are no longer really serve any purpose. And there's a whole list of the, of them there, that they've gone through them. They, they're satisfied that these are documents that can be, that can be destroyed. And there's no point in keeping these if they serve no purpose, for sure. So, if there's any discussion, uh, Counsel Diggan.
Uh, no, I was just gonna make a motion to have those, uh, documents destroyed.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Songye. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by raising your hand. Contrary-minded, carried. The next one is a letter from, from, uh, municipality of Yarmouth. A survey that was handed out, which included our district as well as the Yarmouth Town, and it came from another, uh, another, uh, uh, district. Another municipality, and it was done without our, our knowledge. Without us having a say whether we approved or not. And I think it was, uh, something that probably is not, wasn't the right thing to do. We, we don't feel that it was appropriate for what has happened. So, I guess we're looking to see about a response to this. We, we, we have to, to decide whether or not we're gonna respond to this or not, which I think we should. But what I'm going to do is I'm gonna open the floor for anybody to make comments uh, regarding this survey and regarding the, uh, the, the way it was done. So, uh, okay, I see Counsel Albright, uh, Ca- uh, CEO Muse, did you wanna add anything to that?
Um, before, before we get into the discussion, I just wanna be, I just wanna be clear on, on, on how these discussions operate. I mean, we're, what we're dealing with is a situation with a, a neighboring, uh, partnering municipality. So, um, you will have your opinions and your opinions, um, ought to be shared openly and transparently. Uh, I, I would, I would just note that any sort of discussion that involves individuals, like as an individual uh, probably belongs in an in-camera conversation, uh, to respect the in-camera, um, the, the in-camera nature of, of the participating news participating municipality, so. So, so those, so discussing the situation, the questions, the issue, your concern generally, absolutely should be transparent. If there are any specific questions about individuals involved, that will go in camera, that will not be a public conversation. So, I just wanted to lay that out there for, for you all, just to remind ourselves on the, the rules that follow.
So that's well understood that, you know, this, if you don't, you don't discuss anything personally in public like this, anyway, so, so we'll go first to Counsel Albright.
Thank you, Warden. So, when we're talking about this sur- this survey, we all got, um, copies of the, the survey. And I've read the survey several times to kind of wrap my head around the questions in this survey. And I sit on, there's multiple committees of the Mariner Center expansions, and I'm actually chair of the new build committee. So when we're looking at, you know, what are we going to, what are we gonna do, how are we gonna proceed forward with the new build? I'm actually chair on that. So, having said that, um, I, I would assume that being chair of that committee, I would have been privy to some of these questions ahead of time. But, um, like the rest of you, we didn't know about this survey, and, and that's the issue I have with this survey. Um, I feel like when you're in part, so this is a huge project, right? The Mariner Center expansion is a huge project, two seventy-five main is the bridge to two seventy-five main is a huge project that we're all trying to work together regionally on. And in order to do that well, we need to, we need to, we need to keep each other informed, so communication is important. We need to know that we're all on the same page. We all have to be able, in my opinion, to be able to contribute to what, you know, what we're doing if we're doing something like this. Which we had absolutely no input in this survey whatsoever. That is one of the things that really, really bothered me. So, this survey comes out to our residents, okay? So, this came out through the municipality of Yarmouth. And it wasn't just their residents that were surveyed, the municipality of Argyle residents were surveyed, the town of Yarmouth residents were surveyed. And they were asked questions that I feel, this is my opinion, I feel that these questions they were misleading, they were leading, actually, not misleading, they were leading residents to feel like they're, if you notice in the survey several times, the word delay, delayed, delayed is highlighted or in bold. Um, so they're looking to plant a seed that we're going to be delayed, I feel that they're going to be delaying um, so, one of our projects. It feels like it was intentionally done to plant seeds of doubt in residence, so that, um, something isn't gonna happen. So, I feel like if one project happens, the other project can't happen, and those are the seeds that it's, it felt like they were planting. And, and I, I did speak to some counselors from the municipality of Yarmouth, I didn't speak to all of them, but I did speak to some. And, um, they didn't know these questions, they had not seen these questions. So the way this, the process went down was completely, in my opinion, completely false. So, they generally talked in council meeting about, we should maybe survey our resi- our residents, and they said, yeah, that might be a good idea. It went from that to phone calls were being made to residents in the municipality of Yarmouth, in the municipality of Argyle, and in the town of Yarmouth. We didn't have any say in that. We had absolutely no say in that, and actually, that council had no say in that, they didn't vote on that. They just, all of a sudden, they didn't know what the questions were, these questions were being asked. Um, I feel like it was a big breach of trust. And if we're building our relationships here to try to move these projects forward, this, this survey to me, um, it feels like it set us back in terms of that trust, and it feels like it was really, I was really upset by this survey. And even, even a simple question as, um, the Mariner Center expansion project will include an aquatic center, fitness gym, multipurpose spaces, and expanded common areas. It may also include an indoor walking track, and then to what extent do you support this? I'm chair of the new build committee, and I didn't know that. We don't have that firmly decided yet, and this went out in a survey to residents in Yarmouth Town, Yarmouth County, municipality of Argyle. To me, that's wrong, that's wrong, we haven't determined that whatsoever, I just don't understand the process of this. Um, it feels like it was done backwards, it feels like it was done behind people's backs. And it feels like it was done intentionally in order to plant seeds of doubt in residence for a specific purpose. And why would we do that? We all agreed, we all agreed that we wanted to support the Mariner Center, we all agreed we wanted to support the bridge. Why are we now asking residents about delaying, about delaying and planting these seeds of, even one of the, one of the questions? Um, it asks, a bridge project is being considered, is being Is being considered. We've all given money to the bridge project. I didn't think it was being considered. I was pretty sure that all councils felt consensus on this. So I I just, I read this survey, and I just, I I can't wrap my head around how this went went down the way that it did. We don't do this in Argyle. That's not the way we do things in Argyle. And I don't know about you guys, but for me personally, if the this survey had come to us and we had, I had looked at these questions, and if I had been asked, is it okay that we poll your residents about this? I would have said no. But I feel like we didn't get the opportunity to have any input. That isn't right. I'm not okay with that. Um we're supposed to be partners in this. We're supposed to be a team working together, and we were not consulted. And to be quite honest, the town was not consulted. And the counselors that I talked to at the municipality of Yarmouth, they were not consulted either. I don't know how this happened. I don't know how this happened, and I don't feel that it was done properly, and it it certainly wasn't done the way that we would have done things. And I feel like there was an ulterior motive, and it wasn't a good one. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I've got Counselor Saret and Counselor Bork, Counselor Sret.
Well said, Nicole. Uh having seen the uh survey, I've had two people in my in in my district and one more in another counselor's district call me on this. I'm totally appalled. I cannot get over that somebody would have the nerve to go in so in another one's district and go ahead and do something like this. Uh it's it's just unimaginable. I feel that the municipality of the District of Yarmouth went completely out of bounds with the survey. And by doing this, they were asking our residents uh what they thought of the question that was on that survey, which we had no, no uh uh we we didn't work with it. I am like Nicole said, she's chairman of the new, the 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 new building. Well, guess what? I'm chair of the uh of the bridge. I had no idea about these questions. In fact, I know I I know at our meeting, we passed that Doran from the Mariner Center looked into opening two seventy-five. And when you look at this survey like Nicole, like eloquently said, by God, they're pushing to to put the brakes on the bridge. Uh for myself, that wasn't even a survey at all. The questions, in my opinion, are geared to make people think a certain way. In this case, they are trying to convince people that the bridge will slow down the uh and hurt the expansion. And that is totally, totally wrong. This is absolutely not the case. I believe a letter should be sent to the municipality of District of Yarmouth, signed both by the warden and deputy warden, stating our displeasure of such an activity with our approval. That's it. Thank you.
Counsel Bork.
Thank you, Warden. Um I'm also, um I was shocked to see this, and when I went and read through the questionnaire, and what really, really, really bothered me was uh the question, if one of the three partners uh backed out, that there was uh really putting it in there and saying like, what what's, you know, why would anybody part back out when we're all in agreement to to work on this on this Mariner Center? And I think it's very disrespectful. Um I don't know, it's it's losing trust in in our partners, and I think we should, we were doing very well. And um so I I don't know, it's it's uh you you've said it both uh Nicole and Gee, counselor, and um I don't know, it's 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 just appalling. Thank you.
Counsel Donaldson.
I'm not going to add nothing to to it because Nicole said it all. I'd just like to point out some things for people that are watching that aren't familiar with this as we are. The bridge means oh trying to get the old YMCA swimming pool opened up to the public. And when he mentions two seventy-five or whatever, he means that's the address of the of the YMCA building that now the town of Yarmouth. Oh, and so uh unless you're really close, you wouldn't know all those things. So I just want to say that. And the only thing I could add about a telephone survey with so few people, especially younger families, don't have li- landlines to start with, and those are the people that need to be polled when you're doing a major recreational facility like this is the younger couples, families, however you want to put it, and cell phone information is not readily available until there's a phone book with cell phone numbers in it. What good is trying to, how like, I don't even how you get a thirty percent sample of cell phones? Like, as this survey says, where do you find those numbers? Like, unless somebody gives me their number, I don't know what their cellphone number is. So I'm sure the survey company, they wouldn't have any more access to cellphone numbers than you may, or maybe I'm wrong on that. Can somebody clarify that?
I I can clarify that. Uh I can assure you, cell phones were called. Um where they got that information, I don't know. Um but I think these companies that do these surveys, they may they may buy that information through other companies or you know, how they how they obtain that information. I really, I really couldn't tell you, but I can assure you that cell phones were contacted.
Oh, I know it says in the survey, they were going for thirty percent sample of cell phones, but uh like my cellphone is public, you just got to go on the municipal site that is there. They can find mine. But my neighbor next door, which is a really private person, I don't think that they could find find their cellphone readily because they don't want it out there unless they want somebody to have it. So anyhow, to me, telephone surveys nowadays is just a, in my mind, waste of time, but this one certainly wasn't done the right way. Thank you.
Counsel Sonja.
Thank you. I agree with everything that's being said by everyone. Uh I I have a question, I guess maybe to Alaa. Is that if these are truly partners, they would be partnering in the survey, therefore sending us a bill? And if they're not sending us a bill, then uh that's kind of telling that they were going to do this on their own. Is there any bill in the mail or uh probably wouldn't have it yet anyhow, under these circumstances?
How do I answer this? Uh there is no bill in the mail. Uh there won't be a bill in the mail. It's a unilateral decision.
Counsel Albright.
Thank you for allowing me to speak again. So unilateral decision, uh that's what I'm, how does that happen? That's my big, I guess, my big takeaway from all of this. How does a unilateral decision like that happen? Shouldn't that council have approved the questions in that survey? And shouldn't we as partners have been notified that that our residents were going to be to be polled? And to me, it just, when you look at the questions and you look at, I feel like there's an intention of of trying to suppress something from happening, happening because the word delayed, 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 and it it's the two seventy-five main, right? That's how, that's what I feel. And I'm thinking to myself, what counselor who's already agreed to support the bridge, so the two seventy-five main, the old YMCA? What counselor in their right mind would now look at this survey and said, these questions are great? These questions are thoughtful. These questions, yeah, there's nothing wrong with this. I can't wrap my head around that. Because I just feel like, I I just feel like they're trying to plant a seed. That's how I feel. And I feel like we were totally left out of the equation, completely wrong. We're supposed to be partners in this. They want us to be partners in this. They want us to work together. But for me, and I I just, as soon as I saw this, I thought, how could this have happened? I'm still, I still can't wrap my head around it. And I guess maybe it's because it's just not the way we do things. We do things as a team. We would never, this would never, I I don't think this would ever have happened in our home. I don't think it would have. Thank you for allowing me to speak again. I just, I it my, I'm mind blown.
Counsel Dikdin.
Okay, I guess I was holding back, listening to everyone else, but I guess I'm gonna have a turn at us and I go along with what everybody has said so far. But at the same time, I honestly feel as though uh we can't change the past. We can only learn from it. Uh trust and communications, I wrote down a bunch of stuff before the meeting this evening. Trust and communications is going to be a big part, is going to be all of this uh project as far as I'm concerned. But uh public engagement, we need at some point in time. I am a big pusher for that. I've mentioned it before. Um can the municipality of Argyle afford it? I don't know. Uh I want to be able to bring all those figures to the people I represent before I say yes or no on this project. Um I want to listen to the people and see what they have to tell me. But at the same time, and that this is the biggest project that these three units have ever worked on. And that as a team together, and I will say as a team because I'm hoping we can come back as a team. Uh we're not, I'm not doing it for myself. God knows I can't even swim. I took a course in that twenty-five years ago, thirty years ago from scared stiff in Port Hoxbury. And uh well, my buddy uh and that his daughter let me flap around a whole bunch before she even jumped in to save me. And that so, but I feel as though we've all said that this here was very, very, very vital to this area, and I think we have to work a way to get by what's went on. And like I wrote down here, we're not doing it for ourselves. We're doing it for the people we represent. And if they tell us that this is what they want, they tell us that we're okay with the tax increase, and that I think that's what we should be working for. Um you know, if we get in these matches back and forth and we know what they're called, I leave the first word out, but we don't get ahead like that, nor will we get ahead like that. Uh was it wrong? Yes, but I feel as though we're at a point now where we have to move on. Um you know, and get the trust back, communicate. Communication is going to be everything that this project, communications is everything, no matter what, when you're in a partnership, and that you have to communicate. Um so I'm not gonna I guess everything that could have been said was said as far as what went on, but I feel as though we have to get past what went on and move towards where we can go from here. And uh you know, Lord knows, um I've been talking with people and that, and a lot of them are excited about this project. There's no saying they're not. Now, whether or not they'll be just as excited when we tell them how much their taxes go up or whatever, I don't know. But I feel as though that's that's what they want to hear from us. This is what they want us to do for them. And I feel as though as a team, we have to move on, get past this. This is going to be a very small hurdle, I'm afraid, in the road compared to what some of the ones we have coming up. Um and that's where I am on this project by all means. Thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor Dr. Ma.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh I guess uh most uh what I was thinking about has been said, and uh I think Counsel Dikdin is right that we have to move on. Uh I know we're gonna still, uh I'm still in favor of writing him a a letter, and uh I'm just curious about the information that was collected. If there is any way we can add in our letter that that uh that information be, I guess, for lack of a better word, uh not worth the the powder to blow it to hell. Uh you know, if we can basically just, you know, get rid of it uh and just move on, because I think it's going to be vitally important to move on. It's a big project, it's an exciting project. And I think a lot of our residents uh are excited about it, and uh, you know, we uh have to do our due diligence and uh you know, put this uh this, all this in in back of us and and move forward. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'll add my my couple of comments as as well again. The municipality has to realize how how disappointed we are and how uh uh upset we are that that happened in our municipality without without our knowledge, with our knowledge. Uh if you're going to do something like that, at least let the other municipalities that are included know what's going on. It's it's not something, it it was, it was, it was really unacceptable what happened there. And I think that that they have to realize that it was unacceptable and hope that something like that wouldn't happen again. I I I don't think, I don't think that that uh the project is going to stop. But but as far as the survey, I don't think it I didn't see it as if they wondered if people wanted the the uh uh actual expansion. I read it as if they were, they want to know if people were 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 okay with the uh with the bridge and reopening two seventy-five Main Street. That's what I saw. That seemed that I I I think the survey was geared towards that end more so than the actual, than the actual uh uh expansion itself. I know we have to move on, and I don't think that that there's anybody who's going to back down from the from the uh from the expansion. And the decision to to go ahead with the uh with the reopening of the pool has already been decided. I mean, we, it was decided by 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 the representatives from all three units. So to me, a survey that asks people if they're happy with 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 that, I we've we've, we've made the decision, that that was a decision we made. And and from from the comments that we that we all got, when when the uh YMCA closed, we knew what people wanted. They wanted the pool to reopen. That was the biggest, biggest concern. Because knowing how long we can be without waiting for for the uh new, the new uh uh expansion to to happen, nobody wanted the area to go without a pool for that long. And 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 that would have destroyed some of the programs that are already in place. So we knew as far as far as as far as the public agreeing that we're opening the uh the 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 pool again in waiting for the expansion to come, I don't think there's any question that the public is is on board with that. And obviously, obviously, there were some some studies or or that there were other places that were that were explored. And really, this came out as being not only the best, but probably the only option that we had. So as far as survey, I I'm really, really disappointed with that. I I think I think the municipality knows now how we felt about it, but I still think that we just can't. I think we have to make it official that, you know, there's some kind of a letter that goes to them. Counsel Sret.
I'd like to make a motion that uh our CAO and the warden, Debbie Warden, uh get together and write a letter and uh stating our feelings, and uh I'm sure you'll be able to formulate a letter that'll be uh acceptable to this council. So I made that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Anymore? Yeah, Counsel uh CEO Muse.
Um it, this is less about, it well, it relates to the motion, but I just want to clarify one of the things around this, this idea of delay. I I just want everybody I, I just want everybody in this room and, and for those listening to understand that there, there is, there, there isn't, none of our conversations that we've had with funders would suggest in any way, shape or form that reopening the former YMCA downtown would in any way, shape or form delay the expansion of the Mariner Center. So, so that is just a fact. So the, the second part that I would like to make very clear, and this is about expectations management of the expansion. If we, if we knew exactly what we wanted today and we hired an engineer tomorrow to do a detail review or detail plan of that, that would take a year. And then you would go to tender and that would either happen or it wouldn't. You know, sometimes tenders don't go the way that you want them to. So let's give it a year and a half. And then you have two years construction, right? Counselor Digden, tenders almost never go the way that we intend them to. How about that? So, so we're, we're four to five years out on an expansion if we were ready today. So I, I just want to make sure people understand that the expansion is not a tomorrow project. It is a five-year away from tomorrow project. Now, the funding and the funding requirements may come in before that. And, but, but, but there's a process here. This is a 30 to 33 to 34 million dollar project, depending on what you want to do. These things don't happen overnight and they have to be well crafted. And so I just, so I guess my point is, is that you're gonna have four or five years. If you don't think that 275 Main is an option for you, you're gonna have four to five years where there's no aquatic services, no fitness services that, that, that would be provided in that environment. I should say that very clearly because there are fitness services provided in this community. So I just, I like, this idea that, that there's a delay, that this is gonna happen instantly is just, is just not correct at all. So I just, I felt the need to clarify those two things.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Motion is to draft a letter to the municipality of Yarmouth to express our, our satisfaction and about the survey that went out without our knowledge for sure. And that it's, we feel that it's, it was unacceptable for sure. So any, if there's no other discussions, I'll ask a question. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Contrary minded? Carried. Next item. It's the correspondence and for information. So first one, letter from resident regarding bill for Biodiversity Act legislation. And I'll go through them if there's any questions or any comments. Insurance for fire chiefs that has gone to the roof. For sure. So socio, socioeconomic and demographic profiles. That was a great document, by the way. There was a lot of very, very good information on that. Counselor Shrek, sorry if I missed.
Yes, Mr. Chair, could we get our CIO maybe to go over a bit on that insurance? For the, for the fire departments, I feel there's a clarification or to be added on there. If you, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chair.
No, that's fine.
No, I don't want to do that. No, kidding. I was gonna make a bad joke. We'll move on. So the, so just to give you an understanding of what's happened, two things have happened. It's a hard market for insurance. So all insurance policies municipal, municipal wide have gone up. Municipalities, as it turns out, are very difficult to insure for a variety of reasons that I, I don't think you wanted me to go into too far in detail. But they're extremely difficult to insure. Because it's, it's difficult to underwrite and understand what will happen in a municipal environment. And there's a lot of situations where we're, we're, we have what's called joint and several liability that, that has us responsible for things, even if we're 1% responsible, we can be held 100% responsible financially. So there's all sorts of, 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 you know, reasons why it's difficult to insure municipalities. Which means there's not a lot of insurance companies that actually do it or do it well. There are, and so it puts us in a position, in a kind of a bad position when it comes to having a bad year or bad situation. So what has happened here is two things have happened, bad year combined with a big loss. So that's never good news for insurance, right? That's, that's, that's never a good time, right? So we've had a very, very good record with insurance. The Islands and District event was over 10 years ago, it doesn't even come up on the history. And we had a one-time amount of $4,000 over 10 years. However, we had a big one with the Yilbrook Fire Accident and it caused a, a replacement. They got a brand new one, as you know, which is great, but it, it comes at a cost. And so the, the premium went from 86,700 and that's for all nine, all nine fire departments, right? So combining them all. It went from 86,700 to 127,000 in one year. So it's a $40,000 increase, one pop, of which about 30,000 relates to that accident and the rest relates to like their adjustment from the hard market. So we're in conversations with, well, I had a, I was invited to a meeting with the fire chiefs, needless to say, they were displeased. And they were very respectful. They weren't like pointing fingers at Yilbrook for putting a, putting a, a truck in the ditch. I mean, they know these things happen. So they were very respectful. They were just a little disappointed as to the, the extreme reaction to the insurance premium. Understandably so. I've done a little bit of homework and I know that other municipalities have gone up as well. So really, what it, what it comes down to is, you know, we fund these fire departments. So if their insurance premiums go up by $40,000, that's gonna have an impact on our bottom line. Because they're not miraculously gonna find that money. So especially, you can't fundraise anymore. I mean, so we're it, like we're it. So, so our choices are to bite the bullet and swallow this increase, knowing that the insurance coverage itself is actually quite strong. Or do some shopping. And it, this is a process. And so we will be paying our premiums, we'll be making sure they're insured. And any adjustments will happen subsequent to that, so that nobody is held, is has, is, is without insurance. But I can assure you, the fire chiefs are very upset. And, and even when I make the suggestion to say, well, council has to consider helping you with this. And, but I have to bring that to them for their decision. They're even mad that we're considering it. You know, they're like, well, well, no, like you shouldn't have to pay it either, nobody should. So, you know, they're really, they're, they're, they're great, they're great guys, you know, and they had a really, we had a really good conversation. I say guys because they were all men in the room. And, and, and we just, we just have to measure it all out. But to, to have a gut reaction and, and change everything isn't necessarily the right answer, even if it might be the less expensive answer. As we have to look at insurance coverage as well and, and the long-term implications of that.
Okay. Counselor Ward.
I have one question. I don't know if you found the information. I think I've already asked you. If a fireman gets hurt, what's the coverage for a fireman? Is it the insurance policy that's gonna cover them or is it workman's comp?
It depends. That's an excellent question. I'm actually still looking at answering that question more comprehensively for you, Counselor. It depends on the situation. So they do have, like, they have, so we have always covered them for, you know, accidents on site. And then there's also like, there, there's, there's all sorts of, you know, liability coverage for them as well. The workers' comp is new, is the first year that we've paid into it. It's legislated by the province of Nova Scotia. I, I have, I, I can't answer the question accurately today. I'd like to be able to give you, you know, here's what your coverage is here, here's what your coverage over here. And, and, and this is how it works if you have an accident. So you have more covered. The good news is you have more coverage than you ever had before because we never had workers' comp for the firefighters before. And so, yeah, I guess it does depend on the situation. But I can assure you that, that, that they are well-covered today and I'll give you a more detailed answer.
Thank you.
The next one is summer student employment opportunity and that was for the, for the archives. They, they posted, they're gonna have, they got some grants from the government. Municipal of Bernton Letter Regarding Proposed Amendments, the Lobster Stores Facility and Proposed Development Agreement. And that was for information for us. Notice of Approval Land Use Bylaw Amendment for the cannabis. So we did get a letter of approval for, for our decision. So that's a go. And the Home Warming Application of the Scotia Power, that is a great program. I have filled some out before for, for some residents. And, and if you fall within the salary range, you can get a lot done and it's free of charge. And a lot of people don't realize that, but it's there. And I would, I would recommend that if, if you know anybody, any family or whatever that really could, could use something like that, it's just a matter of making an appointment, they come. They check, they check your, your, your house to see where you're losing your heat, what, if it, if it needs insulation, if it needs windows, if it needs whatever. And if you fall in the, in the right salary range, that, that, that work is free. So it's a really good program and it's something that I think we should keep in mind if we know anybody that could benefit from something like that. Next thing is financial requests. We have none yet because we wait for the, we have to wait for the budget before we can do that. Any agenda topics for next meeting or notice of motion? Counselor Donaldson. And unmute.
I tried to catch you on correspondence, but you kept going and you wasn't.
Oh, sorry. I was looking at the list. I wasn't looking at the faces. Go ahead.
I want to go back to number C, the socioeconomic and demographic profile, our community profile.
Yes.
Who initiated that? Is that something we hired to have these people done or is this something that's general information out there?
Through you, Warden, we were approached by a company offering these services and he said that he could do it for the region. So I thought, well, I'd rather somebody else pay for this. So I asked the rent to see if they were interested in this. And they negotiated with this, this, this company and they paid for this information.
I've gone through it. It's, it's very good information. Some of it's pretty alarming when it comes to, comes to population trends and how we rely on basically one industry to drive the economy here. And the way the population is going down and the, the age of our population. I wish there was a way we could get it out so more people could see it. I mean, it's there in correspondence and information. And after the night, it's gonna go away. So I don't know how we would, because there's a lot of good information in there. So I don't know any suggestions on what we could do with this to make it more public?
Yeah, probably, I don't, could it go on our Facebook site?
Sure could. It could go there, it could go in the newsletter, you could do little bits of information to, 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 you know, to capture it a little bit at a time as opposed to just putting it all out there.
Right.
A little like, like vignettes like Scott does with our volunteers, for instance, he doesn't put them all out at once. He puts them a little bit at a time so that people can, can appreciate and celebrate and absorb that information and move on to the next one. There's all sorts of ways we can do that. And I think it is important, by the way, that we share that information. And the only other thing I'd say about that information is it, it, it works very well with the strategy and the strategic plan that you're looking at. Because it informs you where you are and where perhaps where you want to go. So it might confirm some of the things that you've decided around diversification of your economy, for instance, or attracting a certain demographic, for instance. This information feeds in, in my opinion, the strategic plan that you're working on.
Okay. Counselor Shrek.
There was a great webinar this morning from 10 to 11 on Atlantic provinces. The COVID pandemic, how it's affecting businesses, what the expectations of picking up after the pandemic has gone. A lot about Yarmouth County, the population, seniors and all that kind of, I thought it fell into what we had there, a lot of it. Very interesting. If anybody did go on it, I'm sure you found it interesting, but it was, it was very good. Just to mention. Thank you.
So for agenda topics and notes of motion, I didn't see anybody. Was there anything in the questions? Any questions come? Oh, go ahead, Counselor. Sorry.
I'm just wondering, thank you, Warden. I'm just wondering, have we ever decided what we're gonna do like with the community wells? This is like for an agenda topic. Is, is that, has that been scrapped?
That's correct. Go ahead.
So through you, the, myself and Anin will be meeting this week to talk about what your options are moving forward into 2021.
Okay.
The community wells was certainly, was, was a topic of discussion in a side meeting there. The way we thought we would do community wells has taken a significant turn the other way. There's no question about that. So, you know, I think to, to do that, it comes at a, at a much higher cost than what we anticipated, like. So I think there are other ways to, to, to do this. And I think ultimately, Counselor Budrow, I think it's, again, our best solution is a local solution. So if we can enhance the ability to help people in their homes, then they don't have to travel all over kingdom come to get their water in the first place. That would certainly be our long-term goal, but we won't get there overnight. In, in the meantime, we're gonna have to think about, rethink about some of the short-term goals that we would have to help people. The other thing Remo did recommend was that we not buy drinking water for everyone. And that we only offer that to those truly in need. And because, you know, as, as noted in, in Counselor Sudat's question about what's the $17,000 in Remo, well, that was water. And you know it. And quite frankly, some people needed it, but a lot of people didn't need us to buy it for them. Oh, that, and, and, and I'm not suggesting, I'm suggesting everybody who got it probably needed it. It's just whether they could have done that for themselves is the question. So we're, we're gonna try to focus on those that are higher needs. And we will be as part of our budget deliberations, talking about some of the options and how that, how it impacts your budget. So I know it's answer everything yet because we're not quite finished our work, but that's what we have so far.
Yeah, I, I, I figured, well, it might have been scrapped because we hadn't talked about it in a while. I said, I figured I was just gonna ask the question to see where we're at with it. I know that we had talked to that, that lady and it was like $100,000 for a while because we needed a filtration system for it to be drinking water, you know? So yeah, okay, it's great. Thanks.
Don't always see people raising their hands. If, if you, if you raise your hand and I don't, and I don't recognize you, speak up. Because it's easy to miss. Got all the faces here and then I look at, at the agenda and whatever. So were there any questions that came, that came from the public? None. Now, there's nothing in camera. There's nothing slated for in camera. If we want to go in camera, can we go without having it advertised it or?
You, you can. You do have it as a standing item on this. So, but I think the right thing to do would be to, to be transparent about the nature of the discussion.
Right.
So because we can only go in camera for certain things and I'm presuming Mr. Warden, it's, it would have to do with the survey. And, and any sort of details that we may have to share privately. So that would land under, in my mind, would land under personnel.
Okay.
It's not our personnel and it may, you know, there's an argument whether it's elected, non-elected and all that. I, you know, out of absolute courtesy, you err on the side of, of, of
Exactly.
Of, of privacy. of, of privacy, uh, as it relates to that discussion. So, yes, you have a standing order, uh, in-camera item on your agenda, so you have already told people that it could happen.
Okay, good enough.
Told people exactly what you would talk about, and I guess I just did.
Perhaps we should go in, you know, if anybody has anything else there to discuss. Uh, that would be the place to do it. So we can go in camera, and if we have nothing, we can come out of camera. So, I would need a, uh, a motion.
Motion to go into camera.
Okay, it's moved by Counsel Bork and seconded by Counselor Shret. I think I saw his hand. So we're moving to camera.